First of all, everybody can hear me now? Okay, I have no nose. You can't hear me? Noah, are you saying that just to...okay. Okay, I'll speak louder then. Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming here today. This is a nice turnout. And I'm very happy to see a lot of my friends here.
Louder, please.
Louder, please. Okay. I'm glad everybody's here today. Okay, you can hear them. Thank you. My name's Lance Goff. I'm the Executive Director of the Chicago Board of Elections. I've been the Executive Director of this agency for over three decades, which I'm very proud of. It's been a great place to work and to watch elections evolve as they're doing. I think this is wonderful. And today, we're going to do our program on automatic voter registration. Very pleased that we have my Chairwoman from the Chicago Board of Elections, Metisaw Hernandez. I have my Commissioner from the State Board of Elections, Cassandra B. Watson. And I have other representatives from the Secretary of State's Office and the State Board. And I have to say, my friend in the back room, Noah Praet, the Director of Elections from Cook County. I'm glad he was able to attend with us. He just came back from Washington, DC. So what I'd like to do is, we've already did our housekeeping, so what I'd like to do is introduce my Chairwoman, Metisaw Hernandez, who's been the Chairwoman for several years. And I'm very proud to see the first Latina Chairwoman of any board in the state. So, Metisaw, please.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Good afternoon. On behalf of the Board of Election Commissioners and our staff, I want to welcome you to this public hearing on the implementation of automatic voter registration. In a little while, you'll hear from experts from the Illinois State Board of Elections and the Illinois Secretary of State's Office on the nuts and bolts of how Illinois will join the ever-growing number of states which are taking action to include more citizens on the voter registration rolls. From the Chicago Board of Elections perspective, we see four vital signs we can use to measure the health of democracy. The first vital sign is accuracy and credibility. Are the ballots being counted impartially? Are the elections fair and transparent? Can poll watchers monitor the elections? Are the results verifiable and can they stand up to a recount? The second vital sign is the ability of citizens to exercise their right to vote. Are there hurdles to voter registration? Can the voters find their voting, their polling places? Are there short waits to vote? Are the ballots issued without any interference or obstruction? The third vital sign is competition. Do candidates have the ability to get on the ballot? Do challengers ever succeed in taking on incumbents? Are close contests frequent or rare? Lastly, the fourth vital sign is participation. Are the voters turning out and casting ballots? The reason I think AVR has such amazing bipartisan support is that AVR addresses each and every one of these vital signs. With AVR, we'll get more updates and more new registrations so we can count on the voter rolls being more accurate and representing a much higher percentage of our eligible US citizens. We'll remove hurdles by having our citizens' addresses transferred to election agencies automatically. That leads to election authorities sending pre-election mailings to voters to inform them of their new polling place and their other options for early voting and vote by mail. We'll also have more complete voter rolls. And lastly, with AVR, we may be registering more people who vote only occasionally. But now, they will be on our email and mailing lists and they will receive notices about when and where to vote. And we believe this will provide the impetus for many of them to come out and vote. These are the reasons why we at the Chicago Election Board are so very proud to have contributed to this legislation. And we're grateful to many of our many valuable partners who helped in lobbying for this legislation, such as Noah Praet, Director of Elections at the County Clerk's Board, and the League of Women Voters, Operation Push, the Chicago Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights Under the Law, the Coalition for Immigrant and Refugee Rights, Chicago Votes, Common Cause, Organized Labor, and so many more. So, thank you all, and thank you for joining us today. With that, I would like to welcome to the podium my counterpart from the Illinois State Board of Elections, Member Cassandra Watson. Cassandra has been a member of the State Board since 2013. She is a graduate of UIC and DePaul University College of Law. In addition to her experience as an administrative law judge and arbitrator, I also want to point out and thank Cassandra for having served as a hearing officer with the Chicago Board of Elections as well as with other municipal electoral boards. Please join me in welcoming the State Board of Elections Member Cassandra B. Watson.
Good afternoon, everyone. As you all know now, my name is Cassandra B. Watson and I am a member of the Illinois State Board of Elections from the city of Chicago. First, I want to thank Mr. Lance Goff, the Executive Director of the Chicago Board of Elections, for facilitating and hosting this event this afternoon. I'd also like to thank each of you for coming out to the second public hearing on the Automatic Voter Registration Act. Automatic voter registration has been a long time coming to the state of Illinois. And now that it's here, I'm sure that we all welcome the easier access we hope that it will bring. Again, welcome and thank you for coming.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brenda Long and I'm with the Secretary of State's Office. I'm based in Springfield. And welcome and thank you for coming to our presentation regarding automatic voter registration. Effective, actually, July 1st, but that's a Sunday, on July 2nd of 2018, the Secretary of State is going to switch from a paper-based voter registration process to an electronic process. This process is going to apply, at this point in time, to non-real ID applicants. So, it's going to continue to be an opt-in process. However, every applicant that visits the Secretary of State facility will be given the choice to register to vote. They can say yes, or they can say no. And then, we expect Real ID to launch in January of 2019. And at that point, any person making application for Real ID will actually go to the opt-out process. On a weekly basis, we are going to start receiving files from the Illinois State Board of Elections of all voters that are currently registered in the state of Illinois. And that will include their name and it will include their voting address. If an applicant in our facility is not registered to vote, the applicant will be asked the following question. "You are not currently registered to vote in the state of Illinois. Would you like to register to vote at this time?" There's one caveat to this. If an applicant submits to us immigration documents that shows that they are not a US citizen, they will not be asked this question. If an applicant is registered to vote in Illinois, but they are registered at an address that is different than the address they are using with the Secretary of State or using a different name, the applicant will be asked if they wish to update their voter registration address and/or name. And how we know that they have the different address is because of that weekly file that we receive from the State Board of Elections. We will compare that, the name and the address on that file with the name and address that they are presenting to us. If an applicant responds yes, that they wish to register to vote or to update their voter registration, the applicant will then be directed to a signature pad. And this signature pad is a separate signature pad that will be used solely for voter registration purposes. The applicant must answer yes or no to two questions. One, "I am a US citizen." Two, "I will be at least 17, honored before the next primary election, and be at least 18, honored before the next general or consolidated election." And the next screen actually shows a copy of the signature pad and the questions that will be asked. And then, I'm sorry, go. And so, you can see, each question has a yes or a no. And using the stylus on the signature pad, the applicant has to mark yes or mark no to each question. If the applicant answers yes to each question, the applicant will then have to attest, under penalty of perjury, that they meet the qualifications to register to vote and they will provide an electronic signature. And I'll have a slide in just a minute of that. And then, each...yeah, take...no, that's good. You can go back to the slide. There is the signature pad and the attestation. And then, in the bottom half is where the applicant will sign. And then, they will hit okay. And if you can just go back to... And then, each night, a file will be electronically transferred from the Secretary of State's Office to the State Board of Elections of all the applicants that chose to register to vote at our facilities that day. There's the signature pad again. And then, the final thing, if they have answered yes to both questions and signed their name, this is the final screen of the signature pad. It just says, "Thank you for your application to register to vote. Your vote counts." Now, what happens when the person says, "Yes, I'd like to register to vote," but when we get to the signature pad, they answer one of those two questions, "No." They say, "No, I'm not a US citizen," or "No, I will not be 17 before the primary and 18 before the general or consolidated." If the applicant answers no, that voter registration process stops. It cannot, we have programmed it, so it cannot proceed. That ends the process. No information regarding that voter registration attempt is sent to the State Board of Elections. Then, we do continue, however, with the driver's license or identification card transaction. Your other option is that if we ask a person if they wish to register to vote, maybe that they say no outright. Or, let's say that they were already registered to vote, but that they have a different address or under a different name. As I said before, we'll ask them, "Do you wish to update your name or address?" They could decline and say no. If they say no, they will be directed to the driver's license or ID application. Now, this is still going to be paper. And it's going to, because this doesn't get transmitted to State Board of Elections. And the person will have to mark, check this box. They affirm that the applicant was asked if they wanted to register to vote or to update their voter registration and that they have declined. And again, at that point in time, that is confidential. That information's not sent to State Board of Elections. And the driver's license and ID card process will continue. Part of the law requires our office to inform voters of the qualification, or potential voters, of the qualifications to register to vote, the penalties of submitting false application, and to make sure that the applicant knows that if they do decline to vote, that is confidential. So, we have elected to do this via sign. We will have signs placed in every Secretary of State facility. And it will inform customers of the qualifications, the penalties for submission of false voter applications, and that if the person does register to vote, that that information will be shared with the State Board of Elections. And again, the sign also says that declining to register to vote is confidential and does not affect any service with our office. We will also have Spanish signs posted in every Chicago metro facility with the same exact information as the English signs. And we are open to discussing the need for signs in other languages in certain facilities if there is a need for that. This is a, probably small for some of you in the back of the audience. This is a sample of the current sign. We have worked on the sign. We've gotten some feedback with some of the advocacy organizations. We're open to some more feedback. We've made some changes based on that feedback. We do have a timeframe that we're working with. The sign has to be posted in the facilities by July 2nd. We do have over 120 facilities, so we do need to get them printed, distributed, and hung in each of the facilities. So, if you have feedback on the sign, you can always fill out the form that was passed around and I'd love to hear it. And then, this is my contact information. And feel free to contact me after the meeting if you have additional questions or comments. And of course, we'll be taking feedback today as well. I'm sorry, we're now at the end of my present. Did you hear? Most of what I said was all up on the PowerPoint and that PowerPoint is, was passed out. So, and if you do have questions, then just sign up and I can answer your questions during the question and comment period. Because that actually came to the end of my presentation.
And after the presentation, that's when we're going to do questions and answers, please.
Can everyone hear me? Hello, my name is Dustin Schultz. I'm the AVR Coordinator for the State Board of Elections. Again, if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to email me. I respond most quickly to that fashion. I brought with me some other folks from the SPE that I'd like to quickly recognize. Believe in the back, we have our Assistant Director, Bernadette Matthews. We have General Counsel, Ken Menzel, and Attorney, Michael George. We have our Director of Voting and Registration Systems, Kyle Thomas, and our Public Information Officer, Matt Dietrich. So, today in this presentation, I want to answer two main questions for you. First of all, how does my voter registration application become a voter registration? And second of all, what are the next phases of AVR? Can you guys still hear me? Just want to make sure everybody's hearing properly.
Lean in. Lean into the microphone.
Lean in, okay. So, we're going to present some other additional details as well. We're going to talk about ERIC Automatic and State Updates. We're going to talk about a new pending signature status and some annual reporting that's required in the AVR bill. So, AVR application flow. As Brenda discussed, the dual-purpose application is completed at the facility. And in order to complete an application, the applicant must interact with SOS to complete these dual-purpose applications. So, we're not talking about a situation where we just take all eligible voters and just go ahead and register. Daily, we receive the electronic application and we only receive the application information necessary to complete a voter registration. So, we do not receive any type of information of whether you are an organ donor or any other confidential type of information that may be given at a different AVR agency. So, we receive daily secure transfer of all voter registration applications made at SOS. So, as you can see, I've underlined two of those words, which I want to talk about a little further. First of all, applications. Keep in mind that these are applications until they are fully processed and sent through and completed by the local election authorities and security. We, everything is passed from Secretary of State with us over a secure Illinois, state of Illinois network, so nothing is passed over the regular internet. So, after we receive the applications, we are required by law to pass these to the election authorities within 48 hours. And then, within five days, they are, have the authority to complete the registration by sending a card to you to confirm your registration. So, one thing the AVR bill does is it changes the close of registration dates. As of now, when you fill out your paper process at the DMV, registration closes 28 days prior to an election. And this will close registrations 16 days prior to an election. The signage will be posted at SOS, as it is now, identifying that date. And it will state that if you register within that 16-day period, your registration will not be completed. So, Phase 2 of AVR implementation. And this is beyond what's beginning July 2nd. You're anticipating January 2019 of implementing Real ID applications. And these are the type of applications where unless you specifically opt out of voter registration, you will be automatically registered to vote. You have to continue to interact with the designated AVR agencies, such as SOS. And one thing to keep in mind is it sort of inverses the process that is now going to be completed. As Brenda explains, you opt in, you state you would like to register to vote. This flips it, and unless you opt out, you would be registered to vote. For these type of applications, the applicant must provide citizenship documents, such as a passport or a birth certificate. So, therefore, there will be no voter attestation signature saying you attest to meeting the qualifications to register to vote. If you get a Real ID, it will be assumed and verified that you are eligible. AVR implementation, Phase 3. This is expected to be implemented by July 2019. And the AVR bill states four additional state agencies, which are designated state AVR agencies. The Department of Employment Security, Department of Human Services, Department of Natural Resources, and Financial and Professional Regulation. At Employment Security, that's where you would get your unemployment insurance. Human Services, and then, DNR would be something like hunting and fishing licenses and financial regulation. Professional Regulation would be something like a doctor's license. Statute author also authorizes the SPE to make an agreement with additional agencies to become a designated AVR agency. I know that there has been bills out to add corrections as a designated AVR agency. And so, that would be an example of additional AVR agencies that could be added at any time. And the AVR bill authorizes us to implement that this is either an opt-in or an opt-out dual-purpose application. And in order for it to be an opt-out type of application, it would have to, the agency would probably have to collect Real ID type of verification, again, the birth certificates or the passport. So, ERIC Automatic and State Updates. First of all, what is ERIC? ERIC stands for the Electronic Registration Information Center. And it is a nonprofit organization which has 23 members currently, adding more all the time. Sorry about that. ERIC, Electronic Registration Information Center, 23 members, adding more every time. And essentially, they collect voter registration data and Secretary of State data and then distribute it out to the members in order to compare data. Now, this is a correction from your handouts. Your handouts say every 90 days, but every 60 days, we cross-reference the voter registration database and SOS provided to us by the file from ERIC and automatically updates any registrations found to be more recent at SOS. Now, part of this, if you are automatically updated through ERIC, is it requires the election authorities to reach out and allows the voters to recheck that registration. Also, ERIC, in order to continue to be an ERIC member, requires a 95% outreach by our election authorities, which we have met in all three runs so far. Two runs so far. So, what else is in the AVR bill? Coming with the designated AVR agencies most likely is a new pending signature status. So, for this status, if an AVR agency does not collect a signature and is not able to collect one from us or SOS, then they go to this pending signature status in which they will be pending until they provide their signature to their election authority at time of early voting or regular voting. In addition, the bill requires us to submit annual reporting to the Governor and General Assembly, the number of records transferred by each agency. That would be the number of applications coming from SOS to us. How many of those become registrations? The number of people who update their registration. They're registered, but they update their address. And then, the number of people who opted out of registration, which is more for the Real ID, I checked the box that I would like to opt out. And that is all I have at this time. Do we want to do some questions, Jim? Or how do you want to do that?
Jim's going to do that.
Okay.
I just want to start real quickly. Brenda, you know, in the city of Chicago, we are multi-language. We have not only Spanish, Hindi, Chinese. So, we'd like to work with the Secretary of State's Office to make sure that you have all the different languages that we represent here in the city of Chicago. So, I just wanted to make that clear. Jim, do you want to?
Good afternoon. The speakers will call up Sharon Alter of the League of Women Voters first. And then, in the on-deck circle, we'll have Catherine Mardikas and Jay Young and Julie Justice.
Do I turn to the mic?
Yes, please. Encourage everybody to use your outdoor coaching little children voice.
First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to present testimony on the part, on the behalf of the League of Women Voters of Illinois. As a longstanding organization in support of enhancement of voting rights and as a Just Democracy Coalition member, the League of Women Voters of Illinois strongly supports timely implementation of automatic voter registration in Illinois. Towards this end, and as a follow-up to our November 2019, or 2017 hearing testimony, we urge the Secretary of State's Office to do everything in its power to guarantee that there will be no further delay in implementation. Because of the current delay in meeting the July 2018 implementation deadline, the opt-out registration, a cornerstone of AVR, will not be implemented before the November 2018 election. However, there are key elections in both Chicago and other Illinois municipalities in February of 2019. It is therefore imperative that AVR implementation with the opt-out registration occur in a timely manner for the February 2019 elections in Illinois and not as provided by the presentation earlier by July of 2019. Thank you.
I was expecting a casual question from the cheap seats. I'll be formal here. Yeah, my question, we're kind of going in reverse order. My question really has more to do with probably Phase 3 as you laid out the plan. My question really has more to do with probably Phase Three, as you laid out the, the plan. And it has to do with the potential of including the parolee database, a state database, as a designated ABR agency. The reason for that, well, there are many reasons for that. One is that it is incumbent that we try to include everyone. As you were saying, we went complete list, and a lot of these individuals don't even know that they're eligible to vote. So it'd be a wonderful opportunity to let people who are leaving the penal system know that they are by letting them opt in, or were not opt out, I should say. The other thing is that this would also attest to the desire for accuracy. We know exactly who these people are, and we know exactly where they live. Every time you, from a halfway house to the next place, to the next place, the, the database knows their address. And it would be a way of actually making Illinois' voter rolls more accurate, even more accurate than, say, your student who votes on an old driver's license from three apartments back. This would be a very, very great way of making your voter rolls accurate. And I hope that you consider this in the next phase, early in the next phase, I would hope.
Lance, do you want to do it?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Should I go down?
Oh. Bless you guys.
No, I don't think I'm not arguing here. You gotta agree with me, that's why.
Just to respond quickly. So the ABR bill authorizes the SBE Board by majority vote to bring in an agency like that, which Member Watson is a member. So we, if an agency is open to doing registration, we are open to working with them, and then go before the Board for approval for these agencies.
Let me just say, as a member of the Illinois State Board, that any recommendations that you have for additional ABR agencies should be made directly to the Board. And I would urge all of you who have recommendations to make those representations in writing to the Board and forward them to the Board, and indicate that you want to be on the docket and agendas for the Board to present the recommendations that you have made along with the basis for them. Because I'm sure that the Board would be interested in hearing all of the recommendations and suggestions that not only you may have, but I have a few of my own. So I might be making some suggestions also. So please join me. Thank you.
Also, to follow up on the very good question, there is pending legislation right now on a parallel track to what you're referencing, so that every person being released from incarceration would be required to be provided with voter registration information. So that, because under Illinois law, even if you're still, once you're released from incarceration, and you could be on parole or probation, you are still eligible to vote. So there are, there is some legislation pending right now. It has the support of the Chicago Election Board and hopefully other election jurisdictions around the state that may address the very issue that you're, you're raising. Next up, Jay Young. With common cause of Illinois, I might add.
Good afternoon, everybody. As we said, I'm Jay Young. I am the acting executive director for Common Cause Illinois, and on behalf of our 1.2 million members nationwide, and our 35,000 members here in the state, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to say a few words. So Common Cause is a national nonpartisan advocacy organization founded in 1970 to give citizens the opportunity to make their voices heard in the political process. As an organization, we value transparency and the people's right to hold power accountable. These values serve as our guideposts when we join with our partners in the Just Democracy Illinois Coalition to negotiate with key stakeholders and advocate for the passage and timely implementation of the ABR statute. Back in November of last year, I appeared before the State Board on behalf of the Just Democracy Coalition and affirmed that the broad bipartisan support that our bill garnered in the General Assembly and the tireless effort of the thousands of ordinary people, many of whom are in this room today, that advocated for ABR provided the Board and the implementing agencies with a vast resource that could be accessed to ensure that the design, user experience, signage, training reflected best practices from other states and prioritized input from the community, particularly communities of color. As I noted then, Illinois has historically lagged behind the nation and the region in terms of voter participation by young persons and persons of color, and strong implementation of the ABR statute would have provided an opportunity to address these disparities. Now, we appreciate that the Board, State Board, took our Coalition's recommendations, excuse me, to heart and offered a series of statewide community hearings, including this one, to grant people the opportunity to provide public comments on the implementation effort. And we hope that these opportunities continue to be afforded as implementation continues to roll out over the coming year. Unfortunately, we weren't as successful as we had hoped in ensuring that these community voices were included in the procedures being developed by the Secretary of State's offices. And don't get me wrong, our democracy is going to be substantially strengthened on July 2nd, when opt-in registrations and updates begin to be securely and electronically transmitted by the Secretary of State's office. As was expressed a bit ago, we are greatly concerned that the signage, units of interface, and receipt for the opt-in process are only going to be offered in English and Spanish, as the rich diversity of the state includes many more languages and cultures than that. In keeping in the vein of transparency, I will note that our Coalition was afforded some opportunity to provide input on language included in the signs, as Ms. Klon represented, and she, I know that she also expressed openness to considering other languages. And I, again, I stress that I hope that those future opportunities like this are going to continue to be offered. Before I leave, I want to comment on timeliness and fidelity. Although there are a number of reforms that are baked into the ABR statute, which you heard about earlier, I, I think that most of everyone in this room would agree that the opt-out registrations and updates that were set to occur in the driver services offices lie at the heart of the ABR statute. As such, we were greatly disappointed to learn last fall that a decision to seek a further extension to our Real ID deadlines would cause the state to miss the critical July 1 deadline for opt-in registration, excuse me, opt-out registration. Far from being a political deadline, that deadline was a point of negotiation whereby the advocates agreed to back off of a March 2018 deadline to accommodate a rollout of Real ID that we, we were told was necessary. Again, opt-out registration, from at least Common Cause's perspective, is the cornerstone of the ABR statute, and it's not going to be available in advance of the November general. Last year, the hashtag ABR IL was trending nationwide, as a wide range of advocates and community members touted the virtue of the ABR statute, and as an agency that represents tens of thousands of Illinois residents who understandably believe they would be automatically updated or registered well in advance of this election, we're deeply concerned about the confusion and misinformation that might have occurred because this deadline's going to be missed. Now, we're doing what we can to let our constituents know that there's lots of ways to get registered to vote, but really, there's no way of knowing what damage has been done. Now, despite these concerns, on behalf of Common Cause and its membership, we remain firmly committed to expanding and protecting the access to the ballot, and we remain ready and willing to work with the Board, the Secretary of State's office, and all the other implementing agencies, including advocating for whatever funds the new agencies are going to need to begin their implementation in the coming months. Our ABR statute is the furthest-reaching of its kind in the nation. We all should be proud of its enactment. We certainly are, and we hope that we'll be able to continue to work with all the stakeholders gathered here today to ensure that we live up to its promise. Thanks again for this opportunity, and look forward to hearing from everyone else in
Next up is Julie Justice. After that, we'll hear from Reverend Alice Harper Jones, Zach, I apologize if I'm misreading this, Kowski, and Debbie Lu.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay in the back? Okay. I'd like to thank all of you here today for holding this hearing on automatic voter registration implementation. My name is Julie Justice, and I'm an attorney with the Chicago Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights, an organization that has been fighting for racial equity and economic opportunity since 1969. Our Voting Rights Project, led by Ami Gandhi, has a long and proud tradition of working to promote and protect the vote for all Americans, especially those who have been historically disenfranchised because of discrimination on the basis of race, ethnicity, national origin, or economic status. We're honored to serve as a steering committee of the Just Democracy Coalition, and we're thankful for the leadership of that coalition and for all the folks here today who are standing up for democracy and enfranchisement. The passage of ABR is an important and historic move intended to improve the fairness and accuracy of voter registration in Illinois. The new law, and more importantly, the timely and effective implementation of the new law offer all Illinoisans a promise. The promise is that eligible voters will now become registered automatically when they come into contact with state agencies for other services, such as getting a state ID or a driver's license. And in coming years, people accessing state services such as unemployment insurance or SNAP, otherwise known as food stamps, will also have the opportunity to register on-site. Why is this so important? There has long been a voter registration gap that blocks communities of color from accessing the ballot in equal numbers as white voters. Over the years, intentional registration barriers became enshrined in our registration system. And even if at some point, these barriers became less intentional, the disenfranchisement of communities of color continues today. ABR has both the potential and the tremendous promise of removing many of those historic barriers. Consider that in the state of Oregon, the first state to pass ABR legislation, early findings indicate that registrations at the motor vehicle sites quadrupled in the first few months after implementation. Thousands of new voters were eligible to cast votes as a result. Here in Illinois, ABR has the potential to be even more inclusive and innovative than in other states because of the addition of, because of the addition of other offices and sites. But it can be effective only if implementation is strong, timely, and community-centered. So to meet the promise of ABR law in Illinois, the state agencies charged with administering it must act swiftly and with accuracy. And as advocates, like some of those who have spoken before, we are concerned about the delay and the fact that the Secretary of State has already indicated that it will not meet the original statutory deadline of July 1st, 2018. Full implementation requires that applicants opt out of voter registration. The shift from opting in to opting out is where ABR will likely have the greatest impact. But now, according to the Secretary of State's recent comments, applicants will have to wait until July 2019 to benefit from the opt-out requirements. Timing is important. Make that critically important. Other state agencies, including the Department of Employment Security and the Department of Human Services, are expected to begin their registration of applicants for services in July of 2019. And any delay of implementation during the early phases of the rollout means continued disenfranchisement for long marginalized populations. That's why we are asking all state and local agencies here today to dedicate the resources necessary to meet the law's requirement. And to answer this question, how will voters be ensured that there will be no further delays? Time lost to implementation delays, delays means thousands of votes lost with each passing election cycle. As a member of the Just Democracy Steering Committee, Chicago's Lawyers Committee is ready and willing to work with state and local agency personnel to assist with all implementation efforts. We want to make sure that community voices are included and that registration barriers are removed. We're grateful for the hard work of many agency members here today, and we appreciate the Secretary of State's office and the State Board of Elections recently considering our input on numerous efforts, including a sign that will be placed in all driver's license facilities. Other aspects of ABR implementation where community input would be helpful include the input on the user experience of the voter registration process at agencies, service applications, and interactions with agency personnel. We would also appreciate the opportunity, as this goes forward, to learn about personnel training, tracking of data, and oversight systems to ensure compliance. Working together, all of us here, can make Illinois a shining example of voter registration access and accuracy. Thank you very much. Jim, I need to clarify something.
Oh, go ahead.
Again, Brenda Klon, that was the second speaker that I've heard that has referenced a July of 2019 date for opt-out. If I said something to that in my presentation, I misspoke. Real ID is being launched in January of 2019. So the automatic voter registration for Real ID applicants is going to take effect beginning in January of 2019, not July. And again, when you're talking about automatic voter registration and the opt-out process, that is going to apply solely to Real ID applicants. Not every applicant that comes into a Secretary of State facility after July, or January 1 of 2019 is going to be an opt-out. The person gets to make an election, do you want a Real ID? Only if the person has elected to apply for a Real ID will they be opt-out.
A quick response to that, it is still late. The original statutory deadline was July 1 of 2018, so even if it happens in January of 2019, and I apologize if I misspoke, it is still late. Thank you.
And we disagree with that. What the legislation has an effective date of July 1 of 18, I agree with that. But what the body of the legislation says, that if an application meets the requirements of the Real ID Act, those requirements will not be met until January.
Good afternoon, Board. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. My name is Zach Kowdsky, I'm the Legislative and Political Director for Local 881, United Food and Commercial Workers. We have over 34,000 members across Illinois. We're a proud partner of Just Democracy Coalition here. Our union takes extending the franchise seriously to working people. Our goal is something that organized labor takes seriously, and that's why the AFL-CIO of Illinois was in strong support of ABR and its continued reform efforts here, because it affects our members and their communities. Out of the 34,000 members of UFCW Local 881, 20% of them moved within a year. This requires us to have a very aggressive and consistent effort to make sure that they are registered so that their voices can be fully engaged in the political process. This obviously disproportionately affects our members who are young and minority, which further exacerbates their ability to let their voices and their issues of the union and of their community and family be brought into the political process. With regards to the timelines that have been discussed today, we'll just say that we are disappointed that we're not meeting the deadline that we had thought we would be. I would have strongly encouraged no further delays on this. One of the biggest reasons being that important elections like the 2019 municipal cycle, where efforts to raise wages and provide worker benefits like paid sick leave will be on the ballot, many throughout Cook County, that, again, disproportionately affects hundreds of thousands of our members and working people throughout Illinois. This will not allow, then, for a huge expansion of the franchise to the voters and their workers who could better their lives with a single vote. So again, on behalf of Local 881 UFCW, we firmly believe that being a union member, which is a small d democratic affiliation, is a powerful, life-changing one. But that doesn't come close to being the power of a citizen and an active one at that. So that's why we strongly encourage you today to facilitate this process as soon as possible and do, incur no further delays.
Debbie Lu?
Debbie Look.
Hello, my name is Debbie. I'm with the Coalition for a Better Chinese-American Community. CBCAC is a nonpartisan, community-based organization in Chinatown that advocates for the rights and empowerment of Chinese-Americans. We have spent the past couple decades ensuring that Chinese-American citizens in the greater Chinatown area are registered to vote and are exercising their right to do so. We have been active advocates for AVR, and I am here today to ensure the essential documents, forms, signs, screens, and other AVR materials are translated into Chinese, and that appropriate in-language support will be provided for this and other limited English proficient communities. Many of our community members are still in the process of learning English, and particularly the technical terms and jargon like we see in elections and voting-related signs and forms. So we want to make sure that the goals of wanting all eligible voters to be registered to vote, to meet this goal, it is critical to have language access in all parts of the AVR process. Additionally, the Asian-American community has concerns about AVR's strong, timely, and community-centered opt-out implementation. During the May 1 subject matter hearing, it was stated that it will be delayed, and even though January 1 is the stated deadline earlier, we hope that there is no more delays because any delay will be an incredible blow to our organization like ours who want to encourage more participation in this civic process. While I'm encouraged to see that the Illinois State Board of Elections and other agencies are holding these public hearings, I hope that this serves an opportunity for the state to further engage communities like ours, ethnic organizations who have strong support of effective implementation of AVR, such that I urge that Secretary of State's office do everything to guarantee that there are no more delays to implementation as there are key elections in 2019. Once implemented, AVR will be a welcome and valuable resource for Chinese-American citizens and all other voting-eligible residents in Illinois. Our communities should not be penalized for unnecessary delays or unforeseeable bureaucratic issues. So I actually have three questions. I don't know if you want me to ask them now, or...
Yeah.
Okay. So what is the process for community organizations to see drafts and prototypes well before the AVR materials are finalized and launched to the public?
Are you speaking to the Secretary of State?
Or anyone that will be involved in this process, but Secretary of State could be involved.
We have been working with the Just Democracy Coalition, and they have been submitting comments to both the State Board of Elections and the Secretary of State, and I think it would be helpful if you are a member of that organization to...
For me, I really can share this.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful so that we have more of one point of contact if you could coordinate with the Just Democracy Coalition and funnel the comments through them to either myself or to Dustin for State Board of Elections.
Okay, and then... So then, the other question is, I'm glad to hear that the Secretary of State's office is open to creating additional posters in other languages. Has there been any discussions about what additional language should be and what additional languages and other things would be determined?
So far, the only specific request that we had gotten was Spanish. We heard from today Chinese and specifically Mandarin and Hindi. We do publish the, when there's a constitutional amendment, we do publish those brochures, and we do comply with the Voting Rights Act, and we base it on a ZIP code. So we do publish that in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Hindi, but that's only targeted to certain locations. So we are certainly open to printing and putting the posters in Chinese and Hindi, but the only would be in the facilities where we have that population living that would need that. Obviously, if there's not a need to place a sign down in Carroll, Illinois in Chinese, we would not do that.
We're looking forward to be put in every Secretary of State's office in the city.
Wonderful.
Can I say something real quick?
And again, that may or may not, we'll look at it, but we will go back to how we mailed out and what ZIP codes that they have used from the census that have said where the limited English proficient need is.
I think we need to talk about that.
And this doesn't directly affect this process, but our paperless online voter application website, through our website, does offer voter registration in Chinese and Hindi and Spanish, so that could be an option that you could disseminate to your communities where they have the option to register using Chinese that way.
Yeah, I think that for sure Lance has brought up a good point, because I remember as a child, I went to the Secretary DMV with my parents because they were trying to get their driver's license, but they brought me as an interpreter. So that's, I mean, not a lot of people can afford that, or they may not have children, so that's just something to really consider for people who do not speak English as their first language. Okay, and then the last question that I have is, how can advocacy organizations and other community members stay involved in this process besides joining the Coalition?
I mean, you'll have my email and my contact information. If there's specific questions or concerns, you can always direct them to me at any time. Once we launch, I mean, we have the two different dates. We have the July 1 of 18 will be the opt-in process, and then we won't launch again until January 19 for Real ID. Obviously, we'll be working together with the Just Democracy Coalition as we're getting ready to implement Real ID, but if you have seen anything in the current process that we launched in July that you don't like or you think needs updated, you can just reach out to me at my contact information that's on the powerpoint.
Yeah, and please email me anytime as the AVR coordinator for the State Board, as some of you in the audience who regularly email me know that I do email back very quickly with anything. Just please just email me, and I will interface with anyone about AVR.
And Dustin and I work quite closely together, too, and so I know some of the comments that originally went to Dustin, he forwarded to me and vice versa, so we do work well together.
And we have at least one more speaker, Priscilla Orton from the Mexican-American Legal Defense Fund.
I really have a couple of questions and comments. My first is that we were told, Maldivians told that we needed to ask to be able to see the Spanish-language signs, to do commentary on them. We absolutely would love to see that. My information's on there, Just Democracy, you know, you can find us, no worries. My second is that I'm highly concerned that the Spanish-language signs are being planned for simply Cook County or perhaps the metro area. I believe we really need to look into that and at least at a very bare minimum, use a Spanish sign throughout the state wherever the census data tracks that. I think it's very important that we emphasize that those who are naturalized citizens, yes, they do speak Spanish, but whenever you are doing something that may be complicated or new, you will default to the language in which you are most comfortable, and I think that it is very important for a full democracy to acknowledge that. And finally, the signage as a whole, I just want to remind people that we know from data that at a minimum, the average US citizen or average English speaker reads below an eighth-grade level, and that people absorb information better and in a more quick manner through pictures, and anyone who's had a chance to look at the sign can tell you. It took me about 15 minutes to understand it, and not to toot my own horn, but I went to a pretty good law school. So I would really encourage, I would encourage a simplification of this. I would encourage more pictures. I understand completely that it is not that simple to put these things together and that there are rules that you have to abide by, but I would encourage you to speak with anyone who can help you simplify this or just use more pictograms, because people, at least when I go to my own personal Secretary of State office, there are hundreds of people on a Saturday, we go out the door, and me, I would be flashing by, look at it really quickly, even if it's in my hand, you know, God only knows what happens with like 10 kids in line with you, and there's like noise and chaos, and they make you take off your glasses, and you can't see anything. So I would really encourage, keep it simple, put in more pictures if possible, and we definitely would like to see the Spanish sign. Thank you.
Laura Chamberlain.
Hi, I'm Dr. Laura Chamberlain, and I'm with Clean Count Cook County. We're a citizen election integrity advocacy group in Chicago and Cook County, and my questions are about, on page nine, the implementation phase two, AVR implementation phase two, and the Real ID applications that begin January 2019, and that the applicants must provide citizenship documentation. And my question is, are you going to, or is it allowed, that previous voter registrations in Illinois and also in other states, is that going to be an adequate proof of citizenship? Is that going to be a citizenship document?
No.
No. This is really troubling, isn't it?
The Real ID Act has specific requirements to prove citizenship, and it's a birth certificate or your citizenship naturalization.
So that's it.
Or a US passport.
That's it. Birth certificate, passport. So are people going to be knocked from the rules after 2019?
No.
Okay, so this is only moving forward, but...
Right, now, and remember, they have to have one of those documents to apply for a Real ID.
Right.
Make sure everybody can hear me. So to apply for a Real ID, you have to prove, in context of voting, so we're assuming you're a US citizen, so you either present your birth certificate, your naturalization document, or your United States passport. Then, if you prove one of those things, you will be in the opt-out. You will be told you're going to be registered to vote unless you opt out. If you do not have any of those documents, you still get to have a driver's license. We're not taking away anybody's driver's license or identification card. You will be applying for a standard or non-Real ID identification card or driver's license. That person still gets asked if they want to vote. They're just not in the opt-out process. So the clerk will say, they'll check to see if they're registered to vote already, and if they are, they'll remain registered to vote. They're not kicked off.
Right.
If they are not registered to vote, they will be able to opt in. They'll be asked, do you want to apply to register to vote?
So why the distinction? Why not just allow all of the applicants to be opt-in or opt-out?
I can take that. When the AVR legislation was being contemplated, both election authorities and organizations like the Illinois Coalition for Refugee Rights were very concerned that if you automatically registered everybody with a driver's license, it would lead to basically an entrapment.
Real nonsense.
You would have people then automatically registered, automatically receiving a voter card, and then automatically also receiving a gilded invitation at election time, saying, here's your polling place, here's how you use early voting. And here a clerk, a government official, had advised them or automatically registered them. So that was a safeguard everybody wanted to avoid, you know, instead of automatic voter registration, that would have been automatic deportation.
I get, I get, I get. Okay, thank you.
I forgot my job. Rudy Garrett of Chicago Votes, and then after that Milo Segal. Rudy, did you want me to just read this question that you have?
I can come up and read it.
Okay.
Thank you guys. I'd love to just... Hi, everybody, I'm Rudy. I work with a group called Chicago Votes. We are on the steering committee of the Just Democracy Coalition, and we would like to raise a couple of concerns similar to that of Priscilla's around the posters that will be posted up in the Secretary of State's office. We engage a variety of young people from diverse communities. It's really important that all the materials are easily adjustable and really encouraging for folks to engage in the whole process. As we know, we're always fighting to get more people to engage, and I think having a piece of material that encourages, actively encourages folks to register and engage with the process is going to result in more registrations and an easier process for the folks who are actually making the ask with people, because outside of that face-to-face interaction, all they see are these signs. So not only adding photos, but adding encouraging language around getting registered to vote, and then also possibly a little bit more graphics, some things that entice people to pay attention, because as we know, a lot of government agencies have a lot of pieces of paper on the wall. And so we want to make sure this stands out, and we want to make sure that people understand their rights and what's available to them at the Secretary of State's office. So if you need any help, I'm happy. The Just Democracy Coalition is happy to work with you to make these materials as engaging as possible.
And Milo Segal.
I'm not with any of the illustrious organizations that people have been with. I'm just a citizen. And I just retired after 40 years in the business world as a management consultant where I live with deadlines all the time. And I hear a lot of people talking about it's really important to not miss another deadline, and I guess my question is, do you understand why you missed the deadline that you had, and what has changed so that you can give this group some confidence that you'll meet the new deadline versus just coming back and saying, we missed that deadline also?
I'm actually glad that that question was asked, and I know you're all going to disagree with me, but again, from the Secretary of State's standpoint, we did not miss a deadline. There were two distinct provisions in the bill. There was the Real ID, automatic voter registration, the opt-out process, and there were the non-Real ID applicants, that's the opt-in process. We knew we could do the opt-in process by that July 1 of 2018 date. Real ID is more than just automatic voter registration. Real ID is an extremely large, if not the largest, project our office has ever had to implement. It's a federal mandate that is unfunded, that took years for the federal government to even release their regulations. So we have been working in a methodical manner to implement Real ID, and it is not something as easy as, oh, they just have to bring in documents now. Yes, every person that wants a Real ID, they're going to have to bring in all their identity documents and re-enroll. They're going to have to be verified through three to four different programs. Not only that, we had to go from issuing your driver's license over the counter when you walked out of the facility. You know how you'd get it in the mail now? That's thanks to Real ID. We had to contract with a vendor, they had to build a facility, and now all of our driver's licenses have to be issued from one location, because they had to have security features that were not capable of being printed at our facility. So people may think, they're just delaying, they're delaying. No, we have been working towards implementation of Real ID for many, many years. One of the last things that we just did, we had to rearrange a lot of our facilities because your picture, you know how you used to take it last? You now take it first. Some facilities, we just flip-flopped the workflow, other facilities, we actually had to do some physical remodeling. So every year, we check in with the US Department of Homeland Security and tell them how we're doing on these benchmarks to become compliant. We are, at last check, I think 93% compliant with the Department of Homeland Security Real ID regulations. So what we're anticipating is, is that instead, we won't be asking for an extension in October. Our current extension for Real ID expires in October. At that point in time, we'll be submitting our certification package, saying, we're compliant, we're ready to start, and then in January, we will begin issuing Real ID compliant documents, and it's at that time that those individuals who apply for a Real ID, remind you that they don't have to, will be put into the opt-out process.
Thanks for that certification. I guess, maybe I can ask a question or something differently, then? Why does there seem to be such a disconnect between all these organizations saying we missed a deadline and you saying you did? Because it just seems...
I think at one point, as we have been working towards implementation of Real ID, I think there was some miscommunication as to when we were going to be ready to implement Real ID. But even last year, our extensions have never expired in July. We've always went October to October. So I wasn't a part of some... So I wasn't a part of some of these preliminary discussions that, around negotiating the bill, but to my knowledge, Real ID was not going to be ready to go in July of last year, because we were still in the process of flipping around when you get your picture taken. I said July of last year, I meant July, sorry, July of this year.
You just mentioned how many facilities we have throughout the state of Illinois.
We have approximately 130 facilities in Illinois that all had to be reconfigured.
I mean, I don't want to interrupt the thing, but I hope to break the thing. We originally were started...
Can you please...
And again, I want to keep trying to stress, I keep trying to stress, I want to make sure that we remain, like, I really want to make sure that we have a good and open partnership. And I think it is clear that there was... Sorry. I think that it's clear that there was a miscommunication. In our earlier, one of the prior drafts of our statute, we were strongly pushing for March 2018 deadline. We wanted to have sufficient time to get enough people to go through the registration process, so that they would be ready by November 2018. During the testimony, I think twice, both in the executive committee, I believe the testimony, the question that was asked was, when will the Secretary of State's office be ready to roll out Real ID? And at that time, it was our understanding that they were going to be moving forward in November of 2017, so that this process would already be going on. Again, I agree that there was a miscommunication. The sad thing is that all the folks in this room have been advocating to everybody across the state that this opportunity will be available to them in advance of the November 2018 election. And again, this was not, this was less a political thing. And again, I think, I don't have the statute in front of me, my internet reception kind of sucks down here. But the statute actually represented, talks about access to reliable citizenship information. It's my understanding that the July 1, excuse me, January 1 deadline is when Illinois is going to be certified by the Department of Homeland Security, that we're producing compliant pieces of plastic, the actual IDs. It's not access to the reliable citizenship information that the opt-out process would rely on. So again, we want to be as helpful as we can, and I think I can speak for everybody in the coalition, that whatever resources we have that you guys can lean on to make sure that we at least hit this January 2019 deadline, we're 100% behind you, because we got to go back out there and tell people, you know, you got to get registered a different way. Going into the driver services office, it's just not going to work for you prior to November.
Well, can I ask you that question?
Sure.
Why wouldn't it work for them? Because they are still, if they visit our facility between July and November, they're still going to be asked, do you wish to register to vote?
Yeah.
So why won't that work for them?
Again, the goal of, and I think you'll see this in any ABR statute across the country, the idea is to make it as easy as possible, that there doesn't have to be a question. That's the whole point of opt-out, that we don't have to ask that question. I mean, that's the current process right now is opt-in. You have the opportunity to opt-in.
But remember, they're actually going to have to go through more hurdles in the opt-out process, because they can only do opt-out if they're applying for Real ID, which means they need to be bringing in all their documentation again.
Yeah, and I agree, look, I'll be self-reflective here. It was a critical mistake for us to allow the Real ID rollout and certification process to get compounded with opt-out ABR, because really, the important part of ABR, certainly when I was knocking on the door of legislators, I was saying, they're going to have access to reliable citizenship information, and the way that they were going to be doing it was through this process. Again, I apologize, I didn't mean to turn this into a debate, but...
And, but we tied, it had to be tied to Real ID, because we don't have access to reliable citizenship data, because we, aside from when we implement Real ID, we are not a legal presence state. So when we have people coming in to renew driver's licenses or identification cards, that person could not be a US citizen, and we don't, we have not noted in our file in any manner or form that they're not a US citizen. So if we say, we're going to register you to vote, we've now just registered someone that's not a US citizen. So that's why I think it had to be tied to Real ID, because we're not a legal presence state. Someone mentioned Oregon, I believe Oregon is a legal presence state. So they could automatically, they had the information available to them, is this person a citizen or not, where we just don't have that for everybody else that's already in our system.
Yeah, and the mistake we made was relying on representation that was made in testimony before the executive committee.
So I just, actually, I just looked at the bill, and it says, if the person applicant meets the requirements of the Real ID Act, so based on what Brenda said, they have the numerous multiple checks to decide if the person meets the requirements, therefore, Real ID has to be implemented.
Say that again, Representative.
So the bill actually says the person has to meet the requirements of the Real ID Act in order to be ABR through opt-out. So in order to meet those requirements, you have to go through the process of getting the Real ID, which has the multiple checks, which aren't in place yet and will be in place once the Real ID is enacted. Does that explain? Thanks.
Okay, that's the end of our discussion for today. I know we'll have further discussions coming up. This is not the last discussion that we'll be having down here. Hopefully, we'll have some other meetings, talk about some other ideas. We're getting ready to roll out some important information through the city, I mean, through our agency, that we're going to basically try to advance voting, so we'll be doing that later on. So thank you very much for everybody coming. We appreciate all of this.